On May 27, 2025, for the purposes of proposed zoning code updates and amendments. So Mr. Creach is here to present those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, City Council. So this is ordinance 202527. It's proposed zoning amendments to our planning and zoning code. Comes to you by way of Planning Commission Recommendation 2501. So it's not an actual zone change. There are no properties, no actual properties or actually doing, this is a text amendment. So we are just amending the verbiage in the zoning code. But I did want to show you just a map here of the areas that are subject to the text amendment. So you see the larger red area. That includes basically what we think of as the Loop, all the way down to the city building here up north to Fire Station 87. And if you look there to the right, the map with the colors, we're really talking about the area there in the very light blue. That's the area known as the Central Business District, which is the downtown Sharonville Loop, as we know. So just go back a little bit in time. So as you're aware, you know, the city's done a lot of planning. So there's been some planning documents about things to do. And then there have been some plans prepared of actual construction. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that you already know that the city has pursued. We did a downtown Loop Streetscape Master Plan. That was a conceptual plan. You see that drawing there. And when Kleinger's did that, they actually prepared the plan so we could do it in phases. So those colors are, represent the various phases that the city could implement that plan. So we've done the first phase, Depot Square, back in a couple of years ago. Actually, that included Depot Square as well as Creek Road. Right now, in the works, in the design phase, as you're aware, is the Reading Road Streetscape. So that'll be coming up next as a large phase and scheduled for 2026. So the city has been doing its part with the physical improvements of the public space, planning and implementing those plans along the street. So zoning obviously regulates private uses of land within this zoning district. So this is the next phase of implementing some of the downtown Sharonville Loop vision and goals that have been part of the city for some time. So by updating the zoning code, it regulates land use and the development that occurs on that land. So that's the next phase. So I've got a couple of slides here, and I think hopefully you got these in your packet. And we'll read through all these, but these are basically excerpts from plans that the city has adopted going back to 2010, which included the downtown strategic master plan as well as the 2030 plan update. And actually, the 2030 plan update incorporated all of the 2010 recommendations. So those two plans are really one and the same. But what I wanted to say was those plans talked a lot about increasing residential population density, making the area more vibrant, economically viable in the long term. So, and again, these excerpts here, hopefully had a chance to read these. Talk about how the city should be working towards implementing that goal, bringing more people, more business to the downtown Loop. So all of this information was presented to the Planning Commission. We discussed it at a couple of meetings in a work session. And then we also had a hearing back in, at their meeting in April, where this was passed. And we talked about all this information. But one thing I wanted to point out is the idea of mixed uses. It's probably a concept you've heard Planning Commission discuss pretty thoroughly. So when our code was adopted, was updated in 2022, the concept of mixed-use buildings, that was not part of the code that was adopted in 83. So it was a new thing. It was added in 2022. And it was added as a permitted use in that downtown district, the central business district that we're talking about. So mixed use, just like it sounds. It's a building that requires a mix of uses. Commercial or residential on the first floor, or I'm sorry, commercial or office on the first floor. And then residential would be on the upper floors. And that is your traditional mixed use. So the Planning Commission, before they forwarded this recommendation to you, they looked at a number of urban redevelopment projects, buildings going on throughout the Cincinnati region. And one thing they wanted to do was make sure that they, we had successful redevelopment in downtown Sharonville. So with the traditional definition of mixed use, like I said, it requires a residential be on the upper floors and the entire first floor be dedicated to commercial uses. We thought it'd be a little different here. So we wanted to make it where it would be, you would not require 100% mixed use on the first floor because we did a survey of a lot of these buildings in the region. And there is very, very high vacancy rates on the first floor of a lot of these mixed-use buildings throughout the region. So we wanted to give the Planning Commission some flexibility in their review and approval of these in the future and not just make it something that was required. So just a summary of these zoning amendments. We're doing a couple of things with these amendments. We're adding mixed-use buildings and multifamily dwellings as conditional uses in the central business district and in the abutting SMD district. So I just want to say that currently, that SMD district, these uses are just permitted outright. They're not conditional. So we would actually be making them a little more restrictive in the SMD district. That's the district that surrounds the central business district. We would also create conditional use review guidelines at the Planning Commission that they would review and approve for individual site plans. And if you're not familiar with that process, basically, anyone that wants to do anything has to come to the Planning Commission. They hold a hearing. They take input from neighbors. And they review the application against the code and the intent of the code. And the Planning Commission has the ability to add more conditions, modifications of site plans, table proposals, and the applicant could come back at a later date. So there are a couple of different avenues to achieve a successful project. And then we're amending various sections of the code that deal with the dimensional aspects of any type of development. We're talking about setbacks, building heights, lot coverage ratios, and that sort of thing. I did want to point out that maybe some of you are familiar with this. There's an air, so we took a look at several areas in the Cincinnati region that have kind of a downtown similar to Sharonville's. And we looked at a lot of their codes. And a lot of them did, had different processes to review and approve different types of development. But the one we looked at and we liked the best was the Old Montgomery Gateway Zoning District that was adopted for the southernmost section of downtown Montgomery. It was an area that was redeveloped recently. And the way they did theirs is they made it a conditional use as well. And they put a lot of the review requirements in the hands of the Planning Commission, sort of like what we've done here. So that was the model, the best model we found out there for the proposed changes that Planning Commission. So I'll go through this. This, basically, this is the permitted use table. This is what, basically, our document that says what you can and can't do on land in the city. And just to highlight it there, dwelling multifamily, which is basically apartments, and mixed-use buildings are at the bottom. Currently, those would, are either permitted at the bottom and not permitted up at the top. So we propose to make those conditional. And then you, and that's what the green text is. That's new text added to the code. And then there on the side, 1105.03X, that's a new section that we're adding to the zoning code where the Planning Commission has the, those are the conditional use standards that the Planning Commission will be utilizing to review, basically, any proposals in the central business district in the future. So I'll just quickly go through these. So the things we're addressing with those changes and all of the, we actually gave you the documents with the tables, and they were all highlighted. So what you're looking at here is just a summary. Because when we gave that to you, that included the whole section of the code. So I've just pulled out here the changes. So reducing the required minimum front yard setback. Currently, it's set at 14 feet. So we want to give some flexibility so buildings can be closer to the street, more like an urban feel. So it could be between zero and five feet. And actually, that's the same regulations that we have for the Chester Road. So you notice some of the newer buildings out there are closer to the street rather than having the parking lot in the front. In addition, we're reducing the minimum side yard setback from 10 feet between buildings to five feet between buildings. Or they could have a zero setback if the buildings have, share a common wall. And if you're familiar with downtown Sharonville, there are many buildings that, where they're actually built together and they share a common firewall. We're reducing the minimum rear yard setback from 45 feet to 15, to 10 to 15 feet. That is a rather large rear yard setback. In a lot of cases, these buildings abut either an alley or a creek area in the back. So the maximum lot coverage in excess of 75%. And so basically, what that maximum lot coverage is, that's the percentage of a property of a lot that can be covered by a building. Not the parking lot, just the building. So again, that would be at the discretion of the Planning Commission as part of that conditional use review. And then lastly, reducing the minimum parking space requirement. Right now, it's set at 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. And the proposal is to reduce it to one space. Again, like I said, there were, we looked at many other examples around the region. And actually, in the Montgomery area, they did build a public parking garage. But their requirement is actually zero for additional parking.
Hey, John, before you move on, that, two questions on that first bullet. Is that a part of conditional?
Yes.
Use review as well? Okay. And we're sure that with that zero to five feet setback for the front property line, that all of the front lot lines are at least zero, or at least five feet past the street curb, right? Meaning, there's going to be a sidewalk there. Somebody can't just build a building.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty much everywhere in downtown, there is an existing sidewalk. And a lot of those buildings currently are built right at the line already.
Okay, thank you.
So I didn't want to read through, so these are the actual conditional use standards that the Planning Commission would utilize to review developments in the central business district. I did want to read just a couple of these little blurbs here. But number one, so when they, ever they reviewed that, they would review it against the cohesiveness of the overall development. So basically, someone can't just come in and say, hey, I want to build an apartment building on this area. It's got to go through the process, got to meet the intent of our plan, got to meet all the requirements of the conditional use review process in order to approve. Number two, the Planning Commission can establish building heights, front, side, rear yard setbacks, just, just what you were just talking about. And lot coverage as part of that conditional use process. Number three, the principal buildings have to comply with our architectural standards as part of our new code that was adopted in 2022. Minimum parking requirements, that'll be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to highlight that sentence there. The last sentence, I've underlined it. So the Planning Commission can consider the availability and accessibility of public parking spaces on the street, onsite parking, offsite parking, on street, and within public parking lots and private parking lots in arrangements when determining these parking requirements. Because oftentimes, there are cases where you have a building on one side of the street, and maybe you have a shared parking agreement with another property. Could be abutting your property, or it could be across the street, or catty corner, or whatever. Number five, the buildings comply with our performance standards as a section of our code that deals with noise and vibrations and dust generation. And then number six, very important. The Planning Commission can require the applicant as part of that conditional use review process to submit special studies if they're required. And what we'd be talking about here would be a housing study. Is there demand for the product or the development you're proposing? A traffic study could be part of that. If you're proposing a development of such size, is a traffic study necessary? Signals, the timing of signals in the downtown? Do they need to be changed or whatever? All of those are requirements, or guidelines, rather, that the Planning Commission would have to review these future developments. So, like I said, the, it's all part of our 2010, 2030 plan that was updated to make downtown more of a vibrant destination with a larger residential population density. And actually, even stepping back, we look back in 2024. City Council met and established actual downtown redevelopment in the Loop areas a number one priority for future capital investment in the next five years. That was just, I think it was in September of last year. August, or I'm sorry, April. Planning Commission reviewed and approved these changes to the zoning code. And it's their recommendation that City Council consider and approve these. Ordinance 202527.
I've got a couple. How many stories is 60 feet?
So that would, could be probably about five stories.
Five? And you said that you can, they can go for a conditional use and have first-floor residential?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Creach? Seeing none questions or comments from the audience. Easy group tonight, seeing none. With that, I will close the public hearing on the zoning code amendment. And with that, I will call to order the regular meeting for Sharonville City Council, May 27, 2025. If you could please stand and join Mr. Casey Lippert in a prayer, moment of silence, and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Boo-Hay, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mayor Hardman is absent with notice.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of our last meeting? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written and distributed. Reports of Communications, Mr. Lucas, Safety Service Director.
Thank you. First item, when I'd learned that the same city had statewide Dare Officer of the Year and the statewide Dare Educator of the Year, I thought that was pretty darn cool. And we should probably invite them to a council meeting to be publicly recognized for all the people who watch on ICRC. And so we have both to hear this evening, I think. And Chief would come up. And I think we're going to read the nominations that were submitted and have them talk about the Dare experience.
Very excited about that last piece. I'm honored to share with you news of the special two of the exceptional leaders in our community, whose contributions have helped empower and develop the youth of our community. They have educated children about the dangers of drugs and alcohol and taught them how to better make choices with meaningful life skills. The impact these two make cannot be fully measured. But if you've ever had the opportunity to see them in action, you know what they do makes a difference. And not just that the kids, it makes a difference to our entire community. Dare began in the early 1980s as a school-based program intended to change the culture of abuse and dependency. But it has evolved over the years and now helps to prepare children for the challenges of life. The program is recognized internationally and is commonplace in many schools. But these leaders are anything but common. I'm proud that these remarkable leaders have set themselves apart from their peers. And I'm honored that they've received the state-level recognition. Receiving these awards is peer validation of their commitment and tireless efforts and stands as proof about the differences that they make in our community. Mrs. Wendy McCrory, who teaches fifth grade at Sharonville Elementary School, is the recipient of the 2025 Dare Educator of the Year Award. And our very own Community Resource Officer, Erin Hayes, is the 2025 Dare Officer of the Year for the State of Ohio. I'm not sure how many educators were up for this, but there were 650 Dare educators, officers in the state of Ohio. So Erin stands alone, and Mrs. McCrory, the numbers for teachers as far out as faces that. Wendy is an impactful educator, helping countless children develop a foundation for successful lives. Her support of the Dare lessons delivered by various Dare officers over the years has helped reinforce positive impact on our community and reinforce the officer's message and education. Throughout her career, she has emphasized the core values taught through the Dare curriculum and helped to reinforce and strengthen our community bond. Officer Hayes' presence in our schools as a teacher, mentor, and a positive role model has had a profoundly positive impact on our police-community relations. Erin's impact extends beyond the children. He has established strong partnerships among the school staff at every level and also fostered relationships with the parents and the community at large. Erin's efforts will help strengthen our community beyond the years to come. Each has created a legacy of lasting enrichment through the Dare program. In the spirit of an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, these two leaders have helped empower youth, develop the skills necessary to recognize and resist drug abuse, drug experimentation, and alcohol consumption. But beyond that, they've helped them develop positive life skills to help them confront and counter aggressive behavior, acts of violence, and to establish and develop positive self-esteem. Both Erin and Wendy are exceptional members in our community. I'm honored to have the opportunity to bring them here so they can be recognized. And I'd like to congratulate them on their recognition.
That's what he always says. First of all, thank you for your support of Sharonville Elementary School and your program, as I know the Police Department is a big part of that. I have worked with many Dare officers throughout my years. Actually, I've done with, for instance, these schools for 36 years and retired on Friday. So he has a new partner next year, and he's really excited about that. But three years ago, when Erin came to me at the end of the school year and said, hey, I'm your Dare Officer for next year, he was pretty nervous and said, and went through the training, and I understand the program, but I don't know how to teach kids. And I said, well, I gotcha. I know how to do that, so I'll help you. But what I noticed differently, and not putting back on our other Dare officers, but he wanted to be there. He wanted to be part of it. And he said, I don't want to just work with your fit creators. I want to be part of Sharonville Elementary School. And we just embraced him. And if you could see the kids go crazy when he walks in the building, it's amazing. And I will tell you, some of our students don't have good relationships with police officers. And when they, he first comes in, there are some hesitations. And by the end, they write him letters, and they make the grown man cry. They talk about how they didn't trust him, and they didn't want to listen in the class. And some of them even talk about wanting to become a police officer. I think this year, you got referred to as stepdad because they don't have a father figure. And these are 10-year-olds that are writing these letters. So this program is so important to Sharonville. And I'm leaving it in good hands. We worked with Ms. Benoit, so you'll be good. But thank you for your support of it. And we couldn't, we couldn't have a better resource officer in our community. He really builds relationships with the students and changes their lives. It's amazing to watch him work. All you have to do is come over when he walks to the building. And it's amazing. I'm very honored to work with him.
I can't speak nearly as well as she can, so this won't be nearly as long either.
Sorry.
I don't know, I just, I'm a Sharonville kid. Grew up in Sharonville, so I see myself in a lot of these kids. So connecting with the kids is kind of, comes natural to me in a way. But I want this to be more about you, Ms. McCrory here, or the City Council. Because although the Dare program's a great program, and I'm thankful to the Chief, the Vice Superintendent, Lieutenant Hermes, and for your all support that allowed me to do it, it's because of her that it's so successful. And one of the awesome byproducts of the Dare program is building relationships with not only the staff, but more importantly, with the kids. And she has, from day one, put me in the best position to do that. Each one, this, the Dare program is 10 lessons long, and they're supposed to be 45 minutes each. She gives me an hour each, each lesson. She also gives me additional time. If you have good constructive conversation going on in the classroom on more than one occasion, she's told me, don't worry about the time. We'll find time to get you back in here to finish this lesson. Keep us going, keep talking with them. She also creates more time for me before the program even starts to come in and just talk about me and open up the questions. These questions are pretty comical. Some of them are, anyway. Everything's fair across the board. They ask me questions, personal questions, professional questions, you name it.
They know what they are.
Yeah. Some of them.
Language, they just really question.
I'm too old, not as old as you, but. She earned that. We see the relationship now.
Brother, we're trying to figure that relationship out there.
I think she did. Your brother. Which brother, is that the question?
Youngest.
Yeah. The youngest. But thank you all. Thanks for having Ms. McCrory here. I'm going to miss you. I know Ms. Benoit is there.
I promise I'll come back to her.
That's on record. I'll leave now in front of everybody. But thanks for this opportunity to get her in front of you all. And just thank you for it.
Wendy mentioned retirements. And I just want to thank those who were able to attend Lori Bishop's retirement party last week. That is going to be a big loss for the Public Works Department and really for the city as a whole. We have two upcoming retirements from the Police Department. If you're able to attend, Earl Davis is Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 in this room. And Ray Hugentobler is on the 13th of June, also from 1:00 to 3:00 in this room. In this room, correct, Chief?
Yes.
Again, similar to Lori, probably similar to Wendy. A lot of institutional knowledge going away from the Police Department with those losses. So if you can attend, that would be appreciated. Onto legislation. We have three items tonight. Ordinance 202527 was a subject of the public hearing that John talked about. Resolution 25R08 is regarding our Dora district. Every five years, the Ohio Revised Code requires City Council to consider whether to continue operations of the Dora district or to disband it. We're recommending that Council continue, continue the Dora district for another five years, and we'll be back at that point to have a similar discussion. Ordinance 202533E does three things. The first one is it puts money into the budget for the Sharondale Culvert Project. We talked about this during the budget season. It was in the Q and A. It just never made the actual budget. It was a very last-minute thing. Steve Bosom had an emergency repair made to that culvert last year. This is to permanently address the issue. The second aspect is an advance of funds for our SORDA, upcoming SORDA Kemper Path Repayment Project. SORDA is a reimbursement grant, so we need to advance funds from the general fund and then ultimately get SORDA to reimburse us. And they do that pretty quickly once the project's finalized. The third aspect is adding funds to the law director's budget for some legal matters. And that's it for the legislation this evening. If there's any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you. My report, reminder that we have moved our council meeting, our only council meeting in June, to the 10th from the 17th due to lack of quorum on the 17th. So June 10th is our meeting. And at that meeting, I'd like to ask everybody to wear your new blue polo shirts. June 9th through the 15th is Men's Health Week. So if you could wear those shirts in honor of that, that would be greatly appreciated. I'll send out a reminder on that. I'd also like to congratulate all Sharonville residents who graduated from high school and college this spring. Had quite a few of those. I know that Anna Ellerding is going to try to get as many of those individuals that she can to come to our next meeting to be recognized that we're at the, close to the top of their class. So we can honor those students at that point in time. Like to congratulate everybody who planned to jam in on the Loop this past weekend. Great event. Was not there, unfortunately, but I heard that, I saw the pictures and heard that there was a lot of great things going on. heard that there was a lot of great things going on there. And then to remind everybody that Touch the Truck is on 9 June on Thornview, if you've never been to that event, it's a pretty cool event, a lot of excited kids there to get to see all kinds of vehicles from Fire Department, Public Works, Police Department, I think even when you're a helicopter came, so it's a great event to come down and take a look at. And then lastly, I know I sent out an email, but let me know if you're going to, went to March and the Fourth of July Parade, I will not be there for that event, but I do need to turn in something to the city organizers to let them know that we'll have a spot there. So, if you haven't already gotten back to me, please do so. That's it for my report. Clerk of Council, Ms. BuHite.
Thanks. With the June 17th meeting being moved up to June 10th, so was the public hearing that was originally scheduled on that day, so the public hearing on the annual tax budget is now June 10th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Order to Mr. Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody. We are roughly 33% through the year, and we've, our general fund at least, has spent a little over 31% of our budget, so we are on track there. Other departments are all well below the 33%. Street, construction, maintenance, repair, fire fund, senior housing, and convention center are all below. So kind of typical of where we usually are at this point in time of year. Mentioned a few things about transfers in accordance with some ordinance from last year, we had three transfers, all from the general fund, to separation benefits, capital improvements, and facility improvements that all happened in the month of April. And that is my report.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Cunningham? All right, Treasurer, Mr. Iry.
Thank you. And of course, the other side of what Mr. Cunningham was saying is the revenue year-to-date, being 33 1/3% through the year, as of April 30th, all of our collections for the major funds are above that, we're at 44% for the general fund, street fund at 56%, fire fund at 43.7%, senior housing 38.5%, and convention center 36. So what we budgeted is all good within terms of what we were collecting so far this year. Our income tax numbers are down a bit, 4.45% year-to-date for income tax as compared to last year this time, and the motel tax is down as well, 13.48% year-to-date. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Iry? Seeing none, Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
I don't have anything to report, I'm happy to take questions, if there are any.
All right, seeing none, thank you. At this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? Please come to the podiums, state your name and address for the record, thank you.
My name's Stephanie Lemming, I'm the branch manager at the Sharonville Branch Library. Sue told me I need to come up and speak more, so. But we're very excited, we're getting ready for our summer reading program. Typically, it starts June 1st, this year, the kids and teens have an extra day, we're starting on May 31st. While your library's open June 1st, they're not all open, so everybody gets an extra day. So stop by the Sharonville Library, we'll have activity stations, kids can pick up their reading trackers, and do all of that for the summer. That runs May 31st to July 31st, so kids have all summer, so if you can't make it May 31st, there's still plenty of time to check in, get trackers, get prizes, the Wonder Wheel's coming back. If anybody has stopped in and done that over the summer, you will definitely hear the clicking all day long, but kids can win prizes. In addition to a lot of our regular programs, our book clubs and different things, we're adding a lot more with, there's like a STEAM activity most weeks, we have live animal programs coming, we have a bingo for books, and that's for the whole family, where, you know, we all like prizes and we all like free books. So a lot of good things happening at your library this summer. Can I answer any questions, either about summer or anything else library-related? All right, well, if not, you guys know where to find me, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you. Any other residents? All right, you'll have one more opportunity later on. Council Committees, Community Development, Mr. Tankersley.
Thank you. A BZA and Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for June the 11th. BZA will start at 6:30, followed by Planning Commission here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. No report for budget, finance, or project oversight, but I'd say in the near future, I'm working with administration, and we'll schedule some meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Services, Mr. Lovett.
Good evening, my May report is on file with Mrs. BuHite. Just want to give a reminder that our June meeting has been canceled, we will not have a meeting in June, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, honored citizens. Ms. Knight.
Okey-dokey. Tonight, I would also like to honor all the 2025 Sharonville graduates, as Paul said, college and high school. I just want to say good luck with your future plans, well done.
Thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Noting that our next, our only June meeting will be on the 10th, the Law Committee meeting will be then on the 3rd, June Administrative Conference Room, 5 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This time, rule suspension motions for the first and only reading for immediate effectiveness of Ordinance 2025-33-E. So do I have a motion for rule suspension for the ordinance as read? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first, Mr. Lovett, thank you for the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Thank you, the rule suspension has passed. Ms. BuHite, unfinished business.
Okay. Third reading of Ordinance 2025-27, amending Part 11 of the Sharonville Codified Ordinance is commonly known as the Planning and Zoning Code.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-27? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first, Mr. Cook, thank you for the second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-27 has been approved. Third reading of Resolution 2025R-08, approving the continued operation of Sharonville's designated outdoor refreshment area.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Resolution 2025-R-08? Mr. Cox, thank you for the first, Ms. Knight, thank you for the second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 2025R-08 has been approved.
New business, Ms. BuHite.
All right. First and only reading of Ordinance 2025-33E, amending 2025 appropriations for various funds, authorizing bidding and awarding a contract for the Sharonville Culvert, and authorizing advances of funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-33-E? Mr. Lovett, thank you for the first, Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-33E has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council? Seeing none, this time, are there other matters to be heard before council this evening? Ms. Sharpsher.
I just want to thank the city for putting on the wonderful Memorial Day service at Patriot Point, and all our veterans and other citizens that stood guard, all the participants that sang, the lovely Farwig ladies, and our Boy Scout Troop 803, and who else? The Pac-96? That's right, Pac-96 was there as well, and the Fire Department, it was just a wonderful day, and our wonderful Sue Knight, that was our emcee, thank you, City of Sharonville, they did a great job as always.
Thank you. Ms. Knight?
I just want to say happy birthday to Paul, his birthday was yesterday. Paul Schmidt.
Schmidt, there we go.
Paul can drink legal now.
Paul Kautz is gone. I didn't have a birthday.
Wait a minute.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, thank you. Any other matters? Mr. Tankersley.
I'm going to be sending an email out to the Veterans Committee, there's been a gentleman that's been interviewed on Channel 5 and Channel 9 News, who's a 99-year-old World War II veteran that lives here in Sharonville, and I want to send something out to everybody to see if we can possibly do something for him. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Nice call, anyone? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first, Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Thank you, we are adjourned.